All right, we'll call this meeting to order. I'll entertain an agenda adoption, but I do have a change that Mr. Smith will let us know about. Agenda change.
I'm sorry.
(laugh) Sorry.
Change D two for proclamation for the Constitution.
We're going to add D two, proclamation for the Constitution week. Any other changes? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion on the floor. Properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Invocation today, David Henderson with Fisher Church. Welcome.
Thank you. Let's pray. God, I'm grateful for this town. I'm grateful for the people in it. And thankful for these leaders. I pray, Father, that tonight will be a place of wisdom and just a place, Lord, that we would come together and learn to love our neighbor as ourself much better and care for those around us. So I pray that you give them the wisdom to make the decisions they need to make. And as a town, we would, we would just be a place of unity and friendship and love. We pray in Jesus' name.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
A few proclamations to read this evening. We'll start with the Crop Hunger Walk. Whereas healthy food is essential to living, thriving (cough) excuse me, essential to thriving, to growth and to a prosperous, long life, to those without land to grow food or money to buy is likely to suffer hunger. And whereas eight hundred million people around the world are hungry, including eleven and twelve percent of Americans, and whereas three point two million children die from hunger each week, and sixty-six million primary school aged children around the world would go hungry, in addition to one in five American schoolchildren who risk going to school hungry. And whereas the Crop Hunger Walk has been organizing cities and towns across America to fight hunger around the world in their communities for fifty years. Whereas by participating in the Hunger Crop Walk, we can draw attention to the problems of hunger, but also to solutions improving the quality of life for all neighbors, so no matter where they live, and supporting thriving livelihoods for all people. Now therefore, I, Steve Shasha, Mayor of Harrisburg, do hereby proclaim, Sunday, October thirteenth, two thousand and nineteenth, as Crop Hunger Walk Day. One more proclamation. It happens to be Constitution Week, Septem- Week of September seventeenth. Whereas September seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-second anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Steve Shasha, Mayor of Harrisburg, do hereby proclaim, September seventeenth through the thirty- twenty-third of two thousand and nineteen, Constitution Week. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. Entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Got a motion on the floor.
Same.
Properly seconded. All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Town manager.
All right, Mayor and Council, just want to update the public mainly that our Harrisburg Park-
Hang on, I think I missed a public comment.
There you go.
(laugh) I can't see today. We're going to get a public comment now before the manager has his report. So I'll open the floor to anybody wishing to address council for anything that's on your mind at the podium at this time. And not tied to any of the public hearings that are coming up, so this is freestyle. Anything you want, yes.
Good evening, I'm Elizabeth Barber, First Vice Commander of the American Legion Post here in Harrisburg. I just wanted to stop by and invite everyone to our ceremonial flag retirement ceremony that the Post is having in conjunction with the local Boy Scout troop that is going to be tomorrow evening at seven P M. at the Harrisburg Presbyterian Church in the parking lot that's actually behind the church building. So this is a ceremony in which we have gathered flags that have outlived their useful service to the community, and we're going to properly dispose of them in the manner that is dictated by the American Legion, and the Boy Scouts are going to help us with that. So if you're free, please feel welcome to come and join us for that event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Testerman, the Coordinator for the Cabarrus County Crop Hunger Walk. As the proclamation said, this is the fiftieth anniversary of that walk. The walk actually started as a, actually before the walk, the response started after World War Two by farmers largely in the Midwest sending crops to Europe to help feed people that were hungry in the aftermath of the war. I moved to Cabarrus County in nineteen ninety and have been involved with the Crop Walk since that time. The walk, we're raising the neighborhood of over thirty thousand dollars a year, but we feel like we've kind of plateaued, so we're trying to take that to another level. I know Harrisburg has had, hosted a walk in some years. It's been a while. We would be glad to work with any organization here that would like to get a walk started back in your community. Until that happens, we would love for you to come, join the walk. It's going to be, it rotates back and forth between Concord and Kannaplet, so this year we're back in Concord. It is on Sunday, October the thirteenth. The walk officially starts at two P M. We'll start registering people as soon as they can change out of their Sunday clothes and get to that location. Hunger is very persistent in our community, and again, we're trying to take that, our efforts to another level and get more folks involved, both as walkers raising pledges and businesses that serve as sponsors. And if anybody needs more information, you can just do an internet search for Cabarrus County Crop Hunger Walk and find a page where you can actually raise funds online. It's very streamlined now. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council? Here and done, we'll now go to the manager's report. Sorry about that.
No problem. Just want to reemphasize the fact that Harrisburg Park will be closing on September sixteenth, so that's just right around the corner. As the Harrisburg Park renovation and expansion project gets underway, we will close off access to that park just for safety concerns in it being a construction zone. The Harrisburg Library Branch will remain open during the construction of that project, so you're still able to enjoy that. And Harris Depot Park, on the backside of Harrisburg Park, will also remain open as well during that time. We expect the park will be closed until July twenty twenty, so we're looking at almost a twelve month period here of closure for that park. So we just recommend that you seek out Farmill Park or Stallings Park for your recreation and leisure activities during the construction project. Also associated with the Harrisburg Park project, our Parks and Recreation staff applied for a Part F grant, and we found out a couple of weeks ago that we were awarded a grant for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to apply towards that project. So definitely looking forward to using those funds to emphasize and improve what we already have as an amazing transformation for that park project. So kudos to staff for securing that grant and assisting us in making that project come to fruition. Also just want to notify the public that over the coming months, you'll start to see some paving projects take place. We will be exercising the first round, the first usage of our transportation bond dollars. That transportation bond was adopted in two thousand and seventeen. We've been planning ever since how we want to use those dollars, and we'll start to see the rollout of those funds begin this fall with road pavings across town. So we're excited about getting those efforts going. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant Manager and Finance Director for a finance report.
What's status or progress on Veterans Park?
Veterans Park, so right now it's kind of on schedule. They're about forty percent done of the project scope that they have, so you've noticed a lot of concrete work taking place over the last several weeks. Mechanicals for the fountain have been installed, so we're really reaching the point where landscaping will start to take off in the coming weeks, and that'll be a bulk of the completion of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kind of run through this, a few things that I wanted to point out. So with our revenue and expense dashboard, general fund, as you can see, is lagging significantly behind, but that is typical this time of year. We'll predominantly get our tax revenue coming in in October, November, December, so we'll see that number coming up pretty soon. So that's why general fund and the tax collections look low. The council budget is showing red because we had a few of the townwide dues that are due for the entire year that come out at one time that came out of that account, so that's why that one's so high. That'll level out as we move on in the year. And Parks and Recreation showing red, and that's because of the July fourth event. That entire event shows up in July, so the size of that, it takes a few months for that to catch up and kind of even out, so that's the only reason that one's high. Everything else is tracking on pace. On the project dashboard, I have highlighted some of the main ones that I wanted to kind of point out today. I know isn't designed so that we go through every single project, but that's why those are highlighted, just to kind of point out. So we have added that to our completion date, so hopefully that'll be of help. So here you can see the HVAC for the replacement that, for Station Three. We are in the process of having that designed, and hopefully that'll be installed before too long. We have a December thirty-first date to complete that. The branded facility signage, hopefully everybody's gotten a chance to see those signs that went up at Station One, Two, Three, and Parks for Stallings Park and Farmill Park. The only thing we have left to do on those two, or all those projects, is two things. We've got to get the lighting installed, and then we've got to put the landscaping. We're currently working on the lighting, the landscaping, we're going to wait until the fall to get that put in, and then those projects will be complete. The Harrisburg Elementary ball field nets, that's a project I know that's near and dear to a lot of people's hearts. That has been completed. Actually, my son played on Field Three this weekend, and we got to actually see him in action, so we had about four or five foul balls go over and get caught by the net. So they do work, it was pretty neat to see him in action, so appreciate that. The, these are the multi-year funds. I've broken these up into two sections, the projects in design and then the projects in construction, because I was hoping to try to get, communicate a little bit better what we have in the different stages of its lifespan. So all those target completion dates that you see under the design projects, that's their design completion date, and then we fall down into the construction, those same dates will be the construction completion date. So a couple of the big projects wanted to mention here are the transportation bonds, the intersection improvements. Those are currently, you'll be having those in the next couple of months, they'll come before you for the design approval, and we hope to have those intersections designed by May. And then the stormwater system, A, we're currently working through getting the final design for Phase Two complete. That's scheduled for December, and then we'll move into construction there. You'll see kind of flows a little more, we have a lot of projects in design in that process right now. The construction projects, the C Mac sidewalks, and then the bond sidewalks, we're ultimately working to combine those as we're looking to switch from the C Mac sidewalks to just doing town-funded sidewalks. We've determined that we'll be able to spread our dollars further, taking it out of the C Mac project versus leaving it in, so that way we'll be able to do more sidewalks than before. And we can use the scale of having both the money that we had allocated for the transportation bonds for this first phase of the sidewalks, and then those previously identified C Mac sidewalks all together as one project. So we're hoping to have the construction completed on all those by June of two thousand and twenty. And then the street resurfacing that Hanes was mentioning a moment ago, that's actually before you tonight in new business to have the contracts approved for those, so that should be done by December as well. Fire Station Two, we're pretty close on that. The only two things we really have left to focus on that is a storage building and potentially some elements of the training facility. And then we also have the light that's going to go up along Rocky River Road. That's, the contract's been in place, they're having the final design put on that, and then we'll begin construction to get that up. Veterans, the new Veterans Park, we just discussed that, so I won't go into that again. Harrisburg Park and Elevated Storage Tank, both of those are queued up. The Harrisburg Park, again, as Hanes mentioned, September sixteenth next week, that'll shut down, so we'll begin to work on that. And Elevated Storage Tank, that is going to take a little longer to complete, so as you can see about, I'm not sure what day, April thirty-first is, but we'll go with April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one. Vehicles, most of these vehicles have been started, even the deputy vehicles, we're in the process of getting those ordered. Those take a while to come in. All of the items down below have been ordered, and the fire engine that council approved previous month, that is ordered and should be here next August. And the last part of the project dashboard is our professional service projects. We have a lot, as you can see there, we've got a couple of things completed down at the bottom. The ADA plan, again, this is just identifying what throughout town needs to be addressed. That should be done by December next year. After that, we'll come back to council with a plan for how to address those items that are found within that plan. And then the transportation plan, we had, we're in the process of working through that with plans to have that done by April. Just a few other items, the audit field work, we were able to get that completed this week. I definitely want to say thank you to Brian and all of the finance team. A lot of hard work and long hours went into getting prepared for the audit. We're in the process of finishing up the financial statement drafting, and we should be on schedule for delivery to the L G C prior to the October thirty-first deadline. Based on what our auditor said prior to leaving, we are looking like we had a good audit. There's no issues that they brought to our attention before they left. Typically, if there's anything that they find that is of any concern, they'll follow up with us immediately before they leave, so I feel pretty comfortable that we're in good shape there. Financing for the closing for Harrisburg Park and Elevated Water Tank is planned for September twenty-fourth. The L G C staff has approved, recommended approval rather, to the commission for approval, and that is set for tomorrow morning, so hopefully by tomorrow afternoon we'll hear positive that that was approved. Planning is continuing for the first issue of the transportation bonds. As we're mentioning earlier, with some of these project updates, we're starting to move on a lot of different pieces of this. So with each of the projects that you'll see both tonight and in the future related to the bonds, we'll also have a resolution for intent to reimburse. We're doing that ahead of time so we can go ahead and get these projects started, and then we'll lump them all together in one one million dollar issue this spring. So that's kind of how we're planning to set that. And the last thing, I know I've been following up, I just want to keep you abreast, all of our fixed assets, we've been spending a lot of time trying to go through every department, make sure our fixed assets are accurate, that we have them all identified and properly tagged and recorded. So far, everything's looking good. We haven't found any major issues with that, so there'll just be a peace of mind that we'll have all that properly recorded. And with that, I think that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I just have a quick question on field sponsorship signs. I was approached by a restaurant the other day, and they were told that they were not able to have a sign. I'd like to know what our policy is around field signs, and is it the same policy that we use on the back of jerseys? Because I will tell you, this restaurant was denied a field sign but offered a shirt sign, or shirt sponsorship, so I'm trying to, I'm struggling with. And I understand a policy that says no, but if you do one but not the other, what's, what's our policy on that?
You want to?
Well, the short answer is the policy should be consistent. Now, on the sponsorship at question, I'm not really certain. Obviously, I've been out for a couple of weeks, so I don't know which conversation it is or was one conversation brought to my attention with a potential sponsor, but they were predominantly a alcohol and other type business related versus just a food or-
See, that's where, that's the same one, but that's a restaurant-
Okay.
-and it also serves, it's no different than Hawthorne's. To me, they serve food just like anybody, any of the other restaurants that happen to serve, but so I was just curious what our, but then we offer them a shirt, a jersey, or a team-
Yeah, that's what's, that's what's throwing me, because my, my direction was that, you know, the, it has to be under the premises of that, you know, we're, we're kid-related business and, you know, youth and all that kind of stuff, so anything tobacco, alcohol, you know, predominant, predominance of that being a nature of their business or their business model or any other types of things is usually a no, but I didn't say that we could, I didn't deny them the, the sign sponsor and then tell them they could do a shirt sponsorship. That's what's throwing me off.
Somebody asked them, call them up and offer them a jersey sponsorship.
That doesn't sound like the directives I gave staff. Again, I was at home, so-
No, no, I understand, I'm just trying to understand. As long as we're consistent, I don't have a problem. But we said yes to one and no to the other, it's just kind of hot.
It wouldn't make any sense, right. I'll follow back up with staff to find out if there's any miscommunication and see what happens, so sorry about that.
Yep, no, no problem.
Okay.
I'll go to council for any comments.
Hey, Rob, could you come up and let us know what the status is on candy stick, please?
So the, the construction project we have on Candy Stick is a two-part project, that's a water line and a stormwater project. The water line portion of that project is complete, so we have one more tie-in to make, and that project will be done, and we'll be ready for seeding and mulching out there. The stormwater portion of that also is probably about ninety-five percent complete, where we replaced all of the driveway culverts out there. We upsized those to fifteen inch R C P concrete driveway culverts, and then lowered the, the ditching and got positive drainage on that whole street. So that's really the most upstream portion of the eastern side of System A stormwater project that we're looking at. So all of, all of Candy Stick now will be able to drain into the project that we're designing right now, which is Autumn and School Streets.
Will that be immediate relief for the fellow that's always had the severe problems on Candy Stick?
It'll be partial immediate relief, so he gets, he gets flooding in the front and back of his house. This deals with the water issues that he had off Candy Stick, but the rest of the water he gets actually comes off of school and into the back of his property where it's piped in. The second project we have addresses the rear, the rear of the properties and all the way down to the outfall that we have at the bottom of Autumn.
When you're not around, riding around one day, it becomes down school, goes between three houses, and then behind his house.
Yep.
And then is it going to go under the road and then the culvert down the avenue? Is that what we're planning on doing?
Yeah, that's exactly what we'll have, and, and we're going to address this with residents out there in a, in a public meeting, kind of show our preliminary designs. But the, the long and the short of it is, we'll, we'll kind of go up to where the confluence point is behind all those houses in between Autumn and School, and we'll, we'll put two new inlets there. So we'll collect the water there, and then it'll go underground through thirty-six inch pipes underneath of, parallel, and then down Autumn on one side. Now, the other side will pick up Candy Stick, and it will run both sides of Autumn all the way down to the, to the outfall.
I think the backside will be out of his house.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be, it'll be a dramatic improvement from what's out there, certainly.
Hey, Rob, that pretty-
Yep.
Real quick, Rob, and that fixes, does that fix school or?
It, it goes about halfway up school. Most of school, there's about four houses there that have an issue on, on school. This goes and hits those four houses. Everything north of that already kind of has big pipes, and, and they're doing pretty well.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere. Caldwell and Tom Query, I know everybody got an email, but some folks in the audience probably want to hear our latest and greatest on this four-way stop.
Sure, sure. So at Caldwell, Tom Query, the long-term improvement is still on, we're still going through the design, and you saw that as one of Lee's many projects that he had up there. In the interim basis, we've gotten the authority to go to a four-way stop with some advanced flashers along Tom Query. We're just waiting for the location and design submit. We're actually going to install and pay for that ourselves. It's a pretty low cost, high reward improvement, so because the state budget is still frozen, they don't have, they can't spend any discretionary funds, so even five thousand dollars is not allowed. But we've offered to go ahead and do that and do the work related to the installation, but we're waiting for their traffic engineer to come back with the location and design.
And that won't happen until they free the budget?
No, they're, they're working on that. I, I'm just putting pressure on them to, to get it going. It's just not a high, high on their list, but since we're paying for it, it's, I'm pushing.
We have to put signage up prior to making any of those changes correct, let traffic know?
Yeah, and that's, that's part of the design that I'm talking about, so each local subdivision, including the state, would have their own advanced detection setup, so, or advanced warning setup. So if it was going to go to a signal, that's easy, you just put up the new signal heads. When you're doing these stops, everybody sort of has their own preference. It's not written in any federal manual or anything like that, so the state will have to design how far ahead we need to set those and give us those sign types and things like that.
What I'm saying is, prior to us making any changes, we still have to put signage out that this intersection will be changing?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be some actual physical signs put in the field when we do that. We'll also push it out in our standard, you know, social media. The state will put it on their website as well, and we'll go on ours.
Thank you. One more thing I was going to say, you guys on Candy Stick have done a great job. They're right there with the, they're there for a little bit.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're real happy with the contractor out there. They've, they've done a good job.
I've been walking down there, and I live right there. They've done a great job.
Yeah, there's been some significant issues that they've run into. There's, there's rock all over the place out there that caused some, some changes, and they've, they've really worked with us well, not change ordering us to death.
A lot of constituents have called me and come say that they're happy with it, which will, it's just the best loss for the community.
Well, I'm glad you're happy when we bring a, we bring a change order next month for a small amount. I'm going to remind you, remind you really happy with that.
Any other questions, Rob? Kill me.
I have two things.
You're good. I don't think you're-
Oh, yeah, I'm good.
Awesome.
North Carolina Medisys is having a free over the counter medicine giveaway, September twenty-sixth from nine to two, and it's free for anyone. It's at Forest Hill United Methodist Church in Concord, if anyone in here wants to go to that. And then I wanted to introduce everyone to our two youth council members, our Chair and Vice Chair, Philip Brown and Carly Keller. Will you guys come up and stand in front of the crowd, please? So back in December of last year, you guys remember, we had a death in Harrisburg Park. Two of the five assailants that were arrested were from Harrisburg. So I, from that time, I have been thinking of what, what things could we do to possibly engage the students? And prayed on it, within the first six months of this year, I met Philip and Carly. So let me tell you a little bit about Philip and Carly. Philip is a senior at Hickory Ridge, and he plans to attend a four-year college to double major in theater production and political science with minors in criminal justice and communication. His goal is to be an activist for individuals whose voices are not heard, and he plans on doing all of this while pursuing a career in acting, directing, and producing. For the past four years and currently, Philip volunteers with the Meredith Simpson Walker Youth Leadership Foundation for the Rising Stars Boys Program. And at Hickory Ridge, along with his sister, Philip helped to plan, coordinate, and host the school's first African-American history program, which will continue as his legacy with the school. He also planned and coordinated and hosted the, the school's talent show where all students were able to showcase their talents. Philip is a club officer for Colors of Consciousness Club, which provides a safe place for students to voice their opinions on certain topics while promoting diversity and inclusion at Hickory Ridge. He was recently elected to serve as the Senior Class President for Hickory Ridge. For his tenure, Philip hopes, hopes to increase the morale within the school and create a service project to help those in need in the community. Philip also completed, competed in the Optimist International Orte- Philip also completed, competed in the Optimist International Oral Competition where he had the chance to compete as one of the top forty-nine competitors out of twenty-seven thousand students worldwide. It's amazing. He's in the top fifty. Philip serves as the youth chaplain for his church, which is Parker at C, Parkwood CME, and devotes himself to serving the Lord. He loves to help others and is excited about being appointed to serve as the chair of Harrisburg Youth Council. So, welcome, Philip. And let me tell you a little bit about Carly Keller. Carly is a junior at Higgy Ridge and plans to attend a four-year college upon graduation. She is a member of the Raging Bulls varsity cheerleading team, Go Bulls! Carly also serves as the junior representative on student council. In her spare time, Carly is a lifeguard in, at her neighborhood pool. She is currently the state of North Carolina's representative for the Dare the Drug Abuse Resistance Education Program, the Youth Advocacy Board. Carly also serves as the vice president of the Crohn's and Colitis Foundation Carolinas' Chapter Junior Board Member. Many of you may have seen Carly's beautiful face on billboards throughout the region in the Levine Children's Patient Campaign. It's a big deal. She's been all over the world. Carly and her family hold a Crohn's and Colitis cornhole and cooking tournament each year to help find ways to support and help patients with Crohn's and Colitis. For two years in a row, Carly's team, Carl's team, has, was the top fundraiser for the Crohn and Colitis Walk in our region. Carly has also been selected as the honored hero of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty for the Crohn's and Colitis Foundation. So, congratulations, Carly. She is very involved in the community, is looking forward to continuing to serve the community by being appointed as the vice chair for the Harrisburg Youth Council. So, welcome, Carly. I think this is a great opportunity for them. The mission of the youth council is to really increase and promote civic engagement while empowering the youth of Harrisburg. Um, our goal is to really try to provide educational opportunities for the youth to learn about the town and local government, as well as to provide, um, opportunities for different community aid, um, members to provide education to them about what they do. So, thank you again, Carly and Philip, for stepping up.
So, what's the next steps for these guys?
So, our first meeting will be September twenty-fourth from six-thirty to seven-forty-five here in council chambers. So, the meetings will be the fourth Tuesday of each month here, but the first meeting we will, will, um, review our, our bylaws, talk about different ways that we can get members to come on and help, um, and really try to promote the work of the youth council. I know we got, we have a lot of, um, different initiatives in the town, especially the Sustainability Committee where they could absolutely tap in and help.
Thanks, that's good, good stuff. What else?
I have several things, Mayor. I want to bring your attention, some of the, um, Harrisburg Art, Culture, and Heritage Committee. We look pretty proud of the first event that we'll be having, the multi, multicultural event that will run prior to Rockin' the Bird on September fourteenth at eleven o'clock. It'll run until five o'clock. There are some twenty-three countries now engaged. Um, it will give an opportunity for the public to engage with these different people within our community, the, the dance, the culture, the dress, the food. Uh, we encourage everyone to come out. Also, on October twelfth, the, uh, Art, Culture, and Heritage Committee will also be putting on the art block, and that will be held here in Town Center. Um, it will also be showcasing some of the local artists and some of the area artists. There will also be food available, and we encourage the, the public to come out. Um, one of the newest committees that has been put in place, the Harrisburg Sustainable Committee, uh, had its first meeting. Uh, we're looking very forward to bringing before councils some, uh, UDO adjustments that will, um, help the community, the developers, the residents, and sustainability within our community. So, we're looking forward to that. We had our first meeting and we're looking very forward to some of those committee members who came back. We still have openings available. If anyone within the community would like to be part of any of these committees, we're all the time looking for those volunteers. Um, just recently, this Saturday, the Harrisburg Business Alliance held its first workshop, some four hours. The business leaders here in Harrisburg sat down and hammered out what that vision was for the leaders of this community, the business community here in Harrisburg, and the partnership that we now are putting in place with the Charlotte Regional Business Alliance and how we will be able to reach out past Harrisburg and past those borders to actually help our businesses within town grow. And it was, uh, an excellent turnout and, uh, we, uh, we come up with some really good stuff. I can't really speak about it, but some good stuff.
Anyone else? All right, hear none. We will move on to our first public hearing, Farmington Plan Unit Development.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Uh, the agenda in front of you is a public hearing. It's twenty nineteen O two R to amend the Farmington PUD that was previously approved by Town Council in twenty seventeen. The subject property is located on north side of Rocky River Road, um, bordering the Mecklenburg County. Site address is nine eight eight zero Rocky River Road. Total site area for Farmington on Cabarrus County side is one oh nine point five acres. The PUD site plan amendment will allow the applicant to change, one of the conditions when it was approved in twenty seventeen was to build a YMCA. As we know, the YMCA location had changed and moved to the Harrisburg Park, so this amendment will allow us to remove that condition and build something else on that location. Here's, uh, just to get, orient you to the map, so the blue parcel is where the PUD is. To the north, you have residential villas and some, uh, residential low-density housing. To the east, mostly is commercial, and to the south is also, uh, commercial. This is at intersection of four eighty-five interchange. Most of the changes that you see on the proposed amendment will be in that, uh, area to the north, area three A and three B. You can see it?
No, James will take care of it.
Uh, some of the key highlights, um, in your packet included the staff report along with detailed, uh, amendments with some of the notes, but I'll go through some of the key highlights of what those amendments include. So, there is no change on non-residential space. In twenty seventeen, the non-residential part of this mixed-use project was to include three hundred fifty thousand square feet of, uh, space, so that remains unchanged. In twenty seventeen, when the PUD was approved, the plan was to build up to two hundred forty residential unit with the removal of Y on that location, so we're adding more residential units. So, that number is now going up from two forty to two ninety-six. Out of the two ninety-six, two hundred fifty-eight are attached residential units, while thirty-eight is single-family units. Uh, in previous approval, it was envisioned that there will be up to fifty units, but now they have done some detailed ci, uh, civil engineering work and, uh, the plan is to build thirty-eight single-family homes. Some of the, uh, notes we put on the amendment, uh, maximum building height for commercial non-residential will be fifty feet, residential detached will be thirty-five, residential attached townhomes will be, uh, forty-five feet. All of the townhomes in the PUD, uh, with this amendment, we've made a point that everything, uh, all the townhomes will be alley-loaded, so there won't be any front-facing townhomes with the garages. You have to have the garages in the back and fit with the alleys. We added ten-foot multi-use path along Farmington Ridge Parkway and other key streets. That multi-use path will be connected with the Greenway, which was proposed, uh, in twenty seventeen approval as well. Like I said earlier, the proposal removes the original condition of Y and replaces with, uh, it with residential. This is a map to show you the comparison between twenty seventeen and what the PUD, what the amendment is. If you look on the left on the colored sketch, that's, uh, shows you some townhomes, residential and primarily the site for Y, uh, Y building itself and your soccer, soccer fields. To the right on the top, uh, inside the rectangular red, red box is, uh, what that proposed change is. Basically, we're taking the Y side out and adding townhomes and single-family within that, uh, within that part. Uh, in terms, in terms of adequate public facilities, uh, nothing has changed. That area is well-served with utilities. Uh, traffic impact assessment was done in twenty seventeen and revised in eighteen. With, with the removal of Y, it's actually better in terms of trips generation. The YMCA with that size produces more trips compared to the proposed residential. So, it's, it's a benefit in terms of number of, uh, traffic coming out from that area. Uh, the school's numbers are there for your reference. As always, we provide directly the numbers what we get from the school. Uh, it's mostly for information purpose only. Wanted to share the map of, uh, traffic improvements that was approved in twenty eighteen. Uh, all the blue arrows that you see on the map are the improvements coming from Farmington Project. So, those are the improvements as part, part of this project. There are some green projects on this map that will be completed and are not part of the Farmington, uh, but are part of Holcomb Woods Project. So, they are, eh, actually getting closer to doing those improvements. I'll walk through some of, all the conditions that is part of the project. These, these mostly are same as that was approved in twenty seventeen. We tweaked some language and added some conditions to make it relevant to today's, uh, conditions. Applicant agrees to obtain any local, state, or federal permits if we miss anything, so that's a cover-all for regulations. Applicant agrees to dedicate a twenty-five-foot Greenway easement, except, as I indicated earlier, for the Farmington Ridge Parkway and other key streets will be adding ten-foot-wide gre, uh, multi-use path that will be connected to the Greenway. Greenway will be constructed before fifty percent of the, uh, residential pods are completed. Applicant agrees to restrict cladding materials to, uh, messory products, so no vinyl siding will be used in any products within the PUD. Applicant agrees to install all required phase improvements as required by the TIA and with, with consultation with town staff and NC DOT. Applicant agrees to the final design of Farmington Ridge Parkway and other streets within the PUD as indicated in the plansuit three and four that was included in your packet. Applicant agrees to assess the pavement structure of the existing Farmington Ridge Parkway to the north and will build as part of the Phase One along with, uh, Farmington Ridge Parkway. Applicant agrees that there will be no more than twenty percent of the residential units as rental at any given time and will be restricted as such by deed restrictions. Applicant agrees to install Greenway amenities such as trash receptacles, benches along the Greenway, uh, as part of the Greenway construction. Applicant agrees to remove animal shelter aids and allowed use in this PUD district, which is listed in, uh, on the used table. Um, this was, this is not a change. This was, um, in the previous condition as well. So, we, we held the neighborhood meeting for this, uh, proposed amendment. Again, this is not a rezoning in, in a typical sense. You, you approved the rezoning in twenty seventeen. Because we're changing the site plan, we're calling it a site plan amendment. So, in the zoning map, once it is approved, you'll see a note, rather than saying PUD, it will say PUD, site plan amendment. So, this is an amendment to the previously approved site plan. So, we held neighborhood meeting on July eighteen. Uh, this was presented to the planning board at their August twentieth meeting and the planning board approved, recommended approval by the council. Um, the proposed PUD, along with the conditions that, uh, was presented, is consistent with the intent of the originally approved PUD in twenty seventeen and is also consistent with the HILIP and our UDO. With all of those notes and staff information provided, we are confident that this meets the intent of our code and staff recommends approval. With that, I'll be answering any questions, and I know applicant will be making a presentation as well.
Does this require another TIA?
No. Actually, in terms of traffic generation, we are better off by replacing the Y side with residential.
Any other questions? All right, just go to the applicant.
Good evening, I'm Jim Marfield with NPV Properties. Uh, I guess I've been to see you all, uh, since, uh, two thousand and eight, when we first started working on this. The project really came, uh, started when the Harris Teeter was built and this property was, uh, set up in the PUD as part of the Harris Teeter across the street in about two thousand and two. Um, but we've been working diligently to bring this to, uh, to get this built. It's, it is part of the long-term, uh, Harrisburg Area Land Use Plan and to create a village center here at, uh, this location, and it really hinges around the extension of, uh, Farmington Ridge Parkway through the project. Uh, it was very disappointing after we'd worked hard with the Y for a long time that they determined that they had internal, uh, conflicts with the Charlotte Y and the Cabarrus Y such that we could no longer, uh, they couldn't be situated at Farmington. And so, I guess you all have worked with them to put them at the park, which is a great outcome. It would be our intention within Farming to include within the commercial section a private fitness facility that would serve that same function for the residents in that part of Harrisburg. We have made other progress along the way. We hadn't been sitting idly for the last two years trying to get this fixed, but most importantly, we have identified builders that are going to come in and, uh, build portions of, uh, Farmington, uh, notably Taylor Morrison is going to build a portion of, uh, uh, the townhomes that are directly behind the, uh, the community park that'll be part of Farmington. And then, uh, and Taylor Morrison has been a builder here in Harrisburg for a number of years in a number of projects. Alan Curley with, uh, Taylor Morrison is here and is going to, uh, talk a little bit about, uh, their plans within Farmington. And then TriPoint Homes, which is a national builder, they're, um, top ten national builder. They're new to Charlotte. This will be one of their first projects in the Carolinas. Um, really a high-quality group out of, uh, Southern California, going to bring some, uh, new and, uh, hopefully, uh, exciting product, uh, to the project. Both, uh, they'll be in the Pod Three, which is the, uh, single-family and the, and townhomes where the Y was going to be. Cisco Garcia is here with TriPoint to show you what their plans are for their portion. And then also, uh, Steve Vermillion, my partner at NPV Properties, is going to, um, is here and is going to talk a little bit about the commercial section and our plans for that. So, uh, I'll take a little break and ask if there are any questions for me and then turn it over to the, uh, the rest of the team. And also, Hadi Pavletchko, I got it right? Right, that's a hard one. And, uh, she's with Land Design. Land Design's been the master planner, uh, for this project from the get-go. Any interim questions? And then we'll, we'll go to Steve Vermillion. And you got to tap it a few times to go forward yet.
Thank you. Uh, although we're not, really haven't changed the commercial piece of the project from where we did what we were doing in two thousand and seventeen, we just thought we'd show you a little bit of what we've done in the past, some of the other projects we've completed to give you an idea because we intend to have the same quality of, uh, that was done in these projects. Here we go. Burkeville Village is a project Jim and I completed when, back in our Crowson days, had been very successful, located in a hundred full. I'm sure a lot of you have been by. It has won several national awards for design, uh, in the past. This is Stonecrest Piper Glen. It's located at Ray and four eighty-five. Also, another very successful project that, um, we completed and is very similar to what we intend to do with Farmington in terms of the entertainment that we provide both there and at Burkeville Village on the weekends, which we think has been great for the neighborhoods. Jotun Village is a project we did that's right out in front of, uh, Peninsula Village. It has a Harris Teeter is, has its anchor along with a number of, uh, specialty shops. And then Redstone is in Indianland. We just recently, it's located along five twenty-one at the intersection of five twenty-one and one sixty, and, uh, we just recently completed it. And, uh, we just recently completed it. It's a theater, uh, along with a number of restaurants and would be somewhat similar to what we plan for Farmington.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, again, uh, Jim said I'm Alan Curley with Taylor Morrison. Uh, pleased to be here tonight. I seem mentioned, uh, some of you are probably familiar with our name if you're not. Taylor Morrison came to the Charlotte market in 2015, uh, by way of acquiring, uh, Orleans Homes. In that time, we built the Bridgepoint Community Bloom, uh, Holcomb Woods, and excited to be a part of Farmington as well. I'm going to see if I can go back. You sure? Okay. Well, I want to go back to, I want to go back to the main one first, just so they see where Pod One is. All right. Sorry, guys. All right, so Pod One. So Pod One is right there. So that's our pod. That pod consists of a little over 20 acres. Uh, and we plan to build approximately 144 townhomes. As Sushil mentioned earlier, and you can see on the plan, uh, they're all alley-fed. There'll be a green, Greenway right here at the entrance of the community. That'll be the view corridor coming from the commercial section. Uh, again, uh, there'll be the, the Greenway component, as Sushil mentioned, back here along the creek as well. Uh, but those are the things that he mentioned in his notes that we'll be, uh, putting in Pod One. Uh, this is a, a sample rendering of what we anticipate the units to look like. Uh, we're excited about it. Uh, it'll be the first time we've built this product in this market. Uh, the farmhouse cladding, uh, will be consistent with the commercial and we think it's going to be a nice complement to the overall master plan. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. We're excited again to be a part of it. If there's any specific questions for Taylor Morrison or our pod, I'd be glad to answer your questions. If not, I'll just hand it off to TriPoint.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, thanks for having us here. Uh, TriPoint Homes, as Jim mentioned, brand-new to the market. I've been in the market for 10 years with a competitor and I'm excited to be part of TriPoint, founded 10 years ago in California by three gentlemen. Uh, the Tri doesn't stand for that. It actually stands for Think, Renew, Inspire. And as you see in our elevations, um, well, here's our site plan. Let me, let me talk about that first. So these are two-story townhomes, as Sushil mentioned and Alan mentioned. They're all alley-loaded. There is a plethora of on-screen parking also that's being provided. And these are two-car garages on these townhomes. They're 26-foot wide and 28-foot wide. And then in addition to that, we also have, uh, 40-foot, single-family detached homes on 55-foot wide blocks. And as Alan mentioned, the architecture we've got here proposed is a modern farmhouse look. So you can see some of the elements of the different materials and the architectural, uh, color differen- differentiations. And we believe it'll be a great asset to the neighborhood. And it'll be, uh, consistent with the rest of Farmington and the theme for Farmington. And these are the elevations for our proposed townhomes. As I mentioned, 26-foot wide and 28-foot wide townhomes. And these are two-story townhomes with two-car garages in the middle. Uh, again, TriPoint Homes, uh, new to the market. Glad to be here. Uh, and we have designed these homes specifically for this community. These are not taken off the shelf from any other part of the country and are just being used specifically in this community. Any questions?
Yes, so, um, I'm familiar with, uh, your company and the, uh, Living Smart program that you have. Uh, is that something that you'll be integrating within these homes?
Absolutely.
And so can you speak to the council on what that Living Smart is because you just, uh, put a sustainability thing together and I think this pair loads very well with it.
Oh, thank you for that. Yeah, absolutely. So the Living Smart has, has a multifaceted program that we have at TriPoint. And it involves not only smart home technologies, but also the efficiencies of the home and how they all work together. So the technology can help us control how our home lives and we intend on, on implementing that in this community. There, it's, it's multifaceted, so I don't know what specific part of it you want me to talk about, but it, uh, it's smart home technology, right? It's a smart way of marketing it. And, uh, also will meet or exceed obviously a building goes requirements of insulation and all, all the factors that have to be, uh, met. But it is, it's, uh, very impressive going from a predecessor to this program, the difference in how robust it is. Sorry?
The site portion.
Yeah, it's thirty some, thirty-plus acres.
Any other questions for, I guess, anybody that spoke?
Thank you very much.
Do you have something else? Any other questions? We're good. Thank you. All right, we're going to go to public here. We're going to open up the public here for those speaking for or against the site plan amendment, for or against. And I know we did have, uh, a sign-up, but I think you already spoke, so you're good, right? We're good. Anybody speaking for or against? Here in the number, close the public hearing and go to council for consideration.
Have a question for him before we go to the public.
All right.
Sir, does, how does this impact the type of support you need?
Yeah, so that's next up on the agenda and we'll outline that. Uh, essentially what we're doing is we're removing a non-taxable, uh, portion of the project and replacing it with a taxable portion of the project. So this actually increases the taxable values to the town moving forward.
But does it impact the money, the return of it, which we'll talk about in the next section on the payback for?
It does. It does impact.
Because it's the opposite effect because of the residence versus commercial.
Correct, yes. So what we'll have now, instead of a commercial unit that we would typically just provide public safety services to, we now have to look to apply, uh, streetlights, um, uh, trash collection, things like that, that we would provide residential services. And we'll outline what that cost impact is, uh, and a proposed adjustment to that as a result.
All in favor of motion?
Mayor, I am motion to approve H2019, S02SR, Site Plan Amendment.
Got a motion on the floor? Properly seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose? We have a little consistency statement.
Based, based on the staff report and the staff presentation, the presentation of the applicant, um, this prepared, proposed site plan amendment is consistent with the provisions of the Harrisburg area land use plan and is reasonable in the public interest.
Got a motion on the floor? Properly seconded. All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. All right, move to the next one. Infrastructure reimbursement agreement.
Hey, thank you. Uh, I'm going to try to go through this. I know we've gone through it a few months ago. Uh, I want to try to go through it a little bit to refresh everybody's mind. I know it's complex. There's a lot of stuff involved into it, but we'll try to make it hopefully as understandable as we can. If you have any questions, as we go through it, please feel free to let me know. So the history of this project, if y'all remember, in December of 2018, council approved the Farmington Ridge Project Development District Plan and the related infrastructure reimbursement agreement. Uh, that essentially set the stage for moving forward. Uh, what needed to happen next, which was the county's agreement, or their approval of the whole project. So what we did initially was we created a three-party agreement with Cabarrus County. And, uh, when it went to the county for approval, uh, it took a little time to get through, uh, their final approval process. And that did occur in August, just this past month. And so the town initially had opened the public hearing, uh, back in June with the anticipation that, uh, county was going to approve their agreement at that time. Uh, unfortunately, since they didn't do it until August, we needed to recess it until tonight, uh, so we could take what the county approved, update all of our information and make sure that we were consistent going forward. So there was a lot of different things that went into the county's concerns, but I wanted to mainly just highlight, uh, a couple of things. Typically, the, the county does not do these types of agreements, uh, with anything other than commercial development. Uh, that's primarily because they have the school portion that they have to fund. And so, uh, when it comes to residential developments, a portion, a significant portion of tax revenue that they collect for those go to the schools. Uh, so they typically focus mainly on commercials. That was a little hurdle they had to get through. Uh, what essentially came out of it is they decided to go with two separate agreements. Uh, if you think about it, we kind of have two, uh, different focuses. You know, for the town, we're actually acquiring an asset at the end of this. We're getting, uh, the road and all the infrastructure. Uh, the county doesn't get that. So, uh, it's a little different motivation on us. They, they're focusing more on the economic development that the projects bring. Obviously, that's the key component for what we're doing. Uh, but it's a side benefit is we get the road and the infrastructure at the end of it.
Lee, can I take a moment to interrupt?
Yes.
Just to give the audience a brief understanding of what we're, of the project that we're talking about. So the, uh, infrastructure reimbursement agreement that we're discussing is related to the Farmington mixed-use development plan that we were just discussing. Uh, and as Lee mentioned previously, the town had went into an agreement with the developer to reimburse them the, uh, cost of putting in a four-lane road that will serve their development. So there's a roughly, a rough estimated cost of about $6 million for that road infrastructure improvement that would connect Rocky River Road to Caldwell Road. Uh, the developer as part of their project will be the ones that will be toting the bill for that and be installing that road as part of their project. Uh, the town has agreed or will, has previously agreed under the current arrangement to refund a percentage of the new tax-based growth that they create with their project to the developer to help them pay back for the costs of that road construction. So this is a, uh, sort of a, a way for the town to get a four-lane road out of a project at no cost or no risk for the town, but also a way to help support the developer in their efforts to bring that type of, uh, dense economic development, uh, with their mixed-use center to that area. So it's a, it's sort of a win-win for both sides. So I just wanted to get, set the kind of background for what you're describing as you move forward because it is sort of complex. And if people weren't aware of the previous conversations, I just wanted to set the stage for that.
Thank you. Uh, so with the, uh, ultimately, the other piece that, uh, the county decided was that because of the school piece, they had to bring their percentage from 90% down to 68%. So, uh, kind of giving a recap, a little similar to what Payne just mentioned. So, uh, this type of financing is typically commonly used for either redevelopment or economic development. In our case, it's economic development. And we use the incremental tax, uh, increase for that property tax, uh, that the project is bringing in to actually pay for the project. Uh, again, as Haynes mentioned, the key corridor roadway that's going to be constructed that we'll be getting primarily is a four-lane road with a divided median. Uh, that'll connect Rocky River Road to Tom McQuerry and Caldwell Road. Uh, and it will be the main primary access point to all sections of the Farmington development. So part of the, the detail of this project is that, uh, we have the construction of Farmington Ridge Parkway, the primary road, and I'll show that to you in just a moment. Uh, Shady Vale Lane and then a portion of Dutch Creek Drive. Uh, all of these costs that you see, uh, the different pieces of those roadways are going to be coming into place with that. It also includes the signalization of the intersection of Farmington Ridge Parkway and Rocky River Road and the associated improvements to Rocky River Road and Plaza Road Extension as required by NC DOT. At the end of the day, uh, what should, the plan is that there's going to be approximately 76,000 square feet of office space, 77 square feet of retail space, 12,000 square feet of daycare space, and then about 290, um, townhomes and single-family homes altogether. So you just saw this with the previous public hearing. Uh, so the Farmington Ridge Site Plan, uh, you can see that this dividing line, you can see right down the middle, I know it's kind of hard to see. Uh, everything to the left of that dividing line is Mecklerburg County. To the right is Cabarrus County. So that shows everything to the right of that middle line that's going to be coming in. And you can see right down the middle of that whole development is where the Farmington Ridge Parkway goes. So you can see as it comes in from Rocky River Road into the development, that's going to be the main funnel for all of the roads that go up all the way up to Caldwell, which ultimately will be up here. The project development district map, this just shows the parcels that are involved in this. Uh, we have the primary parcel that we've been discussing today, which is this in the, uh, line mark here. And then we've got these two little parcels right to the side of that. They're currently not annexed into the town. But at such point that they are annexed in, part of this agreement pulls them into this as well. The roadway layout, you can see that again, that's the entire roadway layout for the Cabarrus County side. This highlighted section is everything that's going to be done by this project. So again, just to reiterate, we've got the Parkway coming down here. You've got, uh, Dutch Creek Drive, which is that little piece right here. And then up and down right here is what you have Shady Vale. So that's kind of, again, a summary of all the projects. And now I'm going to get into a lot of detail and I apologize, but, uh, with council approving three documents back in December, I want to make sure that everybody understands what is changing from those original documents. So I've got three slides here that will go through those. I'll try to make it, uh, as easy as possible. Uh, the first thing, the first document that we're looking at is the infrastructure reimbursement agreement. So this is the primary agreement that says what our relationship is with the developer and ultimately on conversely Cabarrus County's relationship with the developer and what is going to be, uh, the responsibility of each party to pay back. So it sets all the guidelines for that. Uh, the agreement, again, as I mentioned earlier, is going to be split from one three-party agreement to two two-party agreements. One agreement with the town, the developer, the other with the county and the developer. Uh, the two agreements are virtually identical except for just switching the perspective. The, it describes the Cabarrus County's participation in the shared reimbursement. Again, before, we had a one combined agreement, so there wasn't that need to show who did what. This is, is adding into it to say, this is our agreement with the developer, but Cabarrus County is partnering with us as well. Uh, the next change was a cumulative reimbursement, uh, as part of the baseline tax levy. Uh, and what that's really relating to is saying that the money that we're going to pay back to the developer is part of the money that they're giving to us. So it's just take the money we're giving and give the portion of that back. Uh, there was three parcels that we initially had, uh, that were not annexed into the town. One of those tax parcels were removed. Uh, there is a change in the date for the developer request for the first payment on or before September 30th. Previously, that was February 1st. Uh, it's not a big deal as far as from the town when that money is requested. Uh, but from the developer, it allows them to get the money closer to when they pay it. As everybody knows, we get our tax bills about July. And so if we waited from, if they paid their tax bill early on and had to wait until February, that was a little long for them. So, uh, the county, uh, and the town agreed that we would move that back to September 30th. Uh, but again, that date can be no sooner than when they pay the, their tax bill to the town. So again, it goes back to the risks that we have involved in this project. We won't give any money out unless we get money in. Uh, the change in the reimbursement percent from the town from 90 to 85%, uh, Haynes alluded to that, uh, a little earlier. So as we have increased the number of residential units as part of the project, our service, uh, demand is going to go up. So what we did, we ran the numbers to see things like sanitation, the streetlights, uh, public safety, how all that was going to be impacted in this. And we determined in order to compensate for that, we needed to drop that percent that the town was going to pay from 90 to 85. So we're able to retain an additional 5% to cover that additional cost. And the final piece, again, as having separate agreements now, it simply says that there, the it simply says that there, the apportionment of the final payment is the same proportion that we're paying for every other payment. Just kind of keeping it consistent for the final payment as well. And those are the only changes to the infrastructure reimbursement agreement. It's a lot of little things, but in the grand scheme of things, there's no significant change. So, then we move to a second document, and this is the project development financing district plan. And if you remember, this is the plan that was actually approved that outlines the entire project and talks about how the town is going to fund it and how the whole project itself is going to be funded. So, again, a lot of these are the same as what you saw on the first document. We removed tax parcel there noted. We modified the total reimbursement amount to the developer. So, trying to simplify this as best as I can, imagine before, we had a smaller dollar amount as a total value of what the total commercial and residential pieces were. And I'll show those numbers to you here in a minute. When we changed over to the additional residential cost, as we mentioned just a few minutes ago, that increased the total value of the project now. And so, in doing so, because the value of, the tax value will go up, the repayment can go back quicker. So, initially, when we looked at this the first time around, we were looking at about a 12-year repayment period from the point of the first request to completion. Now, we're looking at about a 10-year repayment period. So, we shaved two years off of that repayment period, which is great. So, while the dollar amount is going up because the value is going up, we're also having a compensating thing where the repayment period isn't quite as long. So, you can see that the approximate amount, 9.02 million, is currently what we're planning between us and the county to pay the developer for that road. The previous agreement totaled 9.035 million. So, we're actually paying a little bit less based on this current agreements that we have before you tonight. The, it also establishes the base valuation period as January 1 of 2019. So, that's the current year that everybody got their tax bills this year. That's the year that we're saying we're locking in that amount. The original agreement said January 1 of 2018. We're past that now, so we just moved it up a year to 2019. The increase of the estimated future valuation, this is what I was mentioning where we initially, the original agreement, was for $108 million of the entire project, of that value. Now, we're up to 100, a little over 136 million. And again, move the tax reimbursement rate from 90 to 85.
How does the reevaluation coming up in this next year going to affect this?
So, the tough part, and this is one thing I wanted to discuss as we get into it a little more, but there are a lot of variables in this. We know for a fact that we won't pay more than 85% of the tax money they're paying in. So, we know that for a fact, and we know that the maximum length of the agreement is 14 years. It can't go out beyond that. So, if we don't pay it all back by year 14, we don't pay it all back by year 14. We're not subject to any issue with that. But during that period, we have a lot of different things that can change. The tax rates can change, whether it be us or the county. You have the revaluations, and over that 14-year period, there's going to be at least three, maybe four evaluations over that period. If the evaluations keep going up, that's good, because while we're giving more back to them, we're paying it back faster. If it goes down, we're paying them less, but we only have to pay them up through year 14, and we're done. So, it'll make a difference, but at the end of the day, I think if we focus on it, won't be more than 85% of the taxes that they pay in, then we know our maximum exposure there. The last document, this is an easy one. This is the one that, the resolution that established the district. And the only two changes there is we changed the estimated reimbursement amount from 3.4 now to 2.9. So, again, that means we're paying more money, but we're also bringing in more money. And I'll show those figures to you here in a minute. So, it looks like it's up, but it's really not, in the grand scheme of things. Then the last thing is, again, changing those total number of residential units. Previously, we're at two, a little over 200, now we're up to 290. So, the risk of the project, and Haynes mentioned it a little bit, and I've talked a little bit about it tonight, just really wanted to explain that there is no financial risk to this project. We feel very comfortable that everything is set so that we're protected, and that's important. And I want to make sure that everybody in here understands that we're not putting something before you that puts the town at risk. So, at no point, again, will we ever owe more than 85% of the incremental tax generated through year 14. If the project is not completed, so the first thing is if the road is not completed, the reimbursement doesn't kick in. So, if we get a year into the road project and it stalls and doesn't happen, we have no financial money due to them because of that. The completion and us accepting of the roads is what triggers the reimbursement period to begin. And also, no commercial or residential development will be allowed until the road infrastructure is complete. If the road infrastructure gets completed, but the commercial or residential stalls out, then we're only responsible to pay that, again, that 85% of the tax money they pay in through year 14. Whether it's paid in full or not, that is our maximum exposure. And then, all service-related costs associated with the development, as I mentioned, and Haynes mentioned as well, public safety, streetlights, sanitation, all of that, it will be more than covered, very close. It's kind of, because this is, it's increasing as they build out, we're getting more than in the early years. So, we subsidize a little bit in the early, but we make in the end. So, when all said and done, we've covered our, all of those service-related costs by that 15% that we're keeping ourselves. So, the overall financial impact of these changes. The total reimbursement by the town, based on the illustrative schedule, and that's at the back of the plan in the infrastructure reimbursement agreement. Again, expecting to be completed by year 12, which means year 10 of the reimbursement period, is cumulatively $440,000 more than what it was when the original agreement that you approved. However, the post-reimbursement tax increase amount is an additional $115,000 a year. So, our new annual tax increase after reimbursement for the total project will be $485,000 a year. So, where we're spending $440,000 more over the life of this, after that, we're getting additional 115, so after four years, we began repaying, we've repaid that. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was that increase from 10 to 15% that we'll retain will cumulatively, over the course of that 12-year period, add up to $372,000 additional dollars that we wouldn't have had prior to being at the 10% as well as the value of, the tax value being less. So, that's the, our bottom-line numbers of what we're looking at. And with that, I think that's all I have. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, or you can tell me to get out, whatever you like.
Yes, sir.
I have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
And I'll throw, I'll throw all three at you and then let you come back.
Okay.
So, the R-word is in the future, as we all, for those that monitor the financial pages, just when and how bad is the recession going to be if it comes? One, my question is, how does this look based on the unknown of a recession at and/or a housing bubble, if we see that again? The other question is, generally, when we bring in new business, whether it be an anchor such as Publix or something like that, there's always a, there's some type of incentive to get them to come, right? A lot of times, it's done through a tax incentive. So, we've already absorbed the taxes already on that. How does that work with the new business? If we were to give them a tax abatement, in many ways, such as, you know, how many years, five years, 10 years, whatever? And then the last question is, for all these homes and townhomes, who's paying for the services that are being provided? And I may have just misunderstood how the calculations went, but just want to understand that one more time.
Okay. Try to go through those. So, as far as the recession or the housing bubble, the best answer I can give you there is that, again, our protection from the standpoint of if it doesn't get built out in its entirety, we don't owe everything on that. It's the function of what we pay is what the tax value that's been increased based on what they're building. So, if they stop building, we pay up to what they have built up to that increase, and then it's done. If they can't get it finished, built by year 14, whatever they have built and we have paid up to year 14 is all that they get. So, the risk is really on them as far as if a recession or housing bubble hits.
So, that, by year 14, that's all, the whole project, housing, townhomes, roads, everything?
We, we are not on for a dime after year 14. As far as the tax incentives, are you relating to any businesses within that development?
Right. I mean, because he's got 76,000 square feet of retail space, right? So, and he's going to need an anchor to come in. I know, I think Teeter had gotten a tax incentive. I know Publix got a tax incentive. So, the question is, is if you're already absorbing the taxes to pay for the roads, how can you, is that in some ways like double-dipping?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Merrifield, Jim. The residential and the commercial side, am I correct that most of the residential side, Mr. Smith is asking a question about the incentives that may be needed for the commercial side?
Right.
If I'm correct with this development, most of the commercial is on the Mecklenburg side, am I?
It's on both sides, both sides of the county line. But there would be no incentives for the, for any additional businesses that would be requested. I think that's a simple answer. There wouldn't, there wouldn't be any, because the source of any repayment of those is already being used to pay the TIF. So, you can't use that same money twice, right?
Thank you. And I would say that if, the only time that that, we would actually do that would be after year 14, and a new business would come in, you know, I don't know, say 20, 30 years from now, a new business wants to come in with new tax dollars that would be available. But during that 14-year period, the tax reimbursement is locked down for that development. So, there would not be any ability to pay double-dip, like you said. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
There's an echo here.
You echoed yourself.
Too close. So, the services that are provided, run through that question room real quick.
Yeah, the police, fire, sanitation, who's covering that cost? Because, you know, the taxes, I know we, we reduced it by 5%. Does that 5% cover the police, the fire?
Yeah, so the 15% that we had originally, excuse me, the 10% that we were originally going to keep in the first agreement, that was going to be able to cover our public safety, sanitation, streetlights, all of that for the number of units that were proposed at that time. So, when they came back and added those additional residential units, that obviously increases our costs to provide services to those homes. And so, that's when we went back, we crunched the numbers and reduced it from 90% down to 85%. So, now we are retaining 15% of the taxable value of that development as it moves forward. And so, that 15%, we feel very comfortable will cover those added expenses. So, very good question, and I want to drive home the point that no other taxpayer in Harrisburg will be subsidizing this development. It will pay for the services that it provides itself along the way, along its development course. And of course, as Lee mentioned, at the end, we recognize that additional $485,000 in tax revenue that we'll be able to keep wholly once it's complete, or at the end of year 14.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we know the cost of those services during those 14 years? Do we have an idea of what, what that's going to be, or?
Yeah, we, at complete build-out, we're estimating about $60,000 to $70,000 a year. The 15% that we'd be retaining, we would be getting about $70,000 something thousand, so we would be bringing in more. So, again, we have it set so that we will have enough money to cover any of those additional costs throughout build-out. And then after that, we'll have that full access to the 485 going forward.
If we increase services during that time, is that taken into consideration?
That's just based on our current.
15% change based on revaluations, the tax rate, kind of adjusts itself as well, right?
Yeah, but to, to your point, say if we were to add a, another engine company with our fire department. We did everything based on our current projections using our 10-year capital plan that we have in place. So, certainly, a change like that might modify that, but we would look to adjust at that point.
And based on our discussions with, oh, I'm sorry. Our, based on our discussions with Chief Dunn, the, after he evaluated the build-out, through this 14-year period, he did not anticipate this being a direct cause for adding an entire new engine company. But that will, this will be adding to that in the future. And again, so by the time that's needed, hopefully, it won't be needed. And although there's additional building happening, happening down on that side of town, if at such point as that is, we do have that 485 after build-out, so hopefully, we'll be able to hold off until after then.
What other questions? We good? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to open up this public hearing for those speaking for or against updates to the Farmington Ridge Parkway Project Development District Plan, the resolution to create the district, and the infrastructure reimbursement agreement.
Rodney Dillinger, 3713 Harrisburg Court. So, who is maintaining the road during the 14 years when it is beat up, potholes, or whatever? And I asked a long time ago about it being put on the website, because this is a very complicated thing, and a lot of people in Harrisburg will not understand this. And some examples would have done good. But another question I'd like to ask is, we've talked about Cabarrus County. We've talked about the town of Harrisburg, but we talked about economic stimulation that it's supposed to do to the area. Well, what is Mecklenburg County? Where is their part in this? That road is going right beside Mecklenburg County, and there are cut-throughs in there. So, the tax dollars, if you're in Mecklenburg County, will go to Mecklenburg County. Whatever commercial is over there, you're going to spend the tax dollars in Mecklenburg County, and they're going to get the cat taxes. So, I would like to know what skin does Mecklenburg County have in this Farmington Parkway?
So, three questions there. First question, the information is on the website. It's been on the website since we adopted the first agreement a few months ago. We've updated that information, so it's out there and it's public for anyone to take a look at. Because you're right, it is very complex, and we want to make sure that the public understands that. In terms of the road maintenance during this project, we actually recognize that as a potential problem. We didn't want him to construct a road in year one and have 14 years' worth of traffic and abuse on that at that time. So, the developer has agreed to maintain the road during that entire TIF period. And there are actually some different thresholds in there. So, after a certain year period within this agreement, I think it's year 12, I want to think, after year 12, if he is not paid back in its entirety, he will be responsible for going back and do a complete repave of the project for year 13 and 14 if it's not complete. So, he does have the skin in the game to maintain the road during the TIF agreement, and he's got extra incentive to complete the project in a timely manner. Otherwise, he'd be facing that repave. In terms of Mecklenburg County and Charlotte, there's currently no skin in the game for them on their perspective. Honestly, it's sort of small potatoes for them. We do have some, there's been some conversations with Mr. Merrifield and I about including Charlotte and looking for them to have a similar agreement to what we have here for them and the arrangements that will be associated with future 485 corridor improvements. So, that interchanged there, and the improvements that could happen there if this particular, particular development came back with some adjustments or became more dense in any capacity. So, we're actually looking forward to that. So we're actually looking forward to that and seeing what we can do. But currently today, Charlotte and Mecklenburg County doesn't have any, uh, agreement like this.
All right, thank you, Hanes.
Yep. Good question.
Anyone else wishing to address counsel for those speaking for or against? Here now, we'll close the public hearing and go to counsel for consideration.
I have one more question, um, and it may be directed at Mr. Merrifield. Being that you would be constructing this road and wanting to get it done within the first two years, is that road going to be subject to all the construction traffic and heavy equipment? Well, we need to build the road. Right. Is one of the first things we do and so, but using the town's standards, uh, for building a road like that, it, it's perfectly adequate to stand, withstand the residential and commercial construction traffic that would be on it. And then we would be main, if there are any problems, we'll be maintaining that during that first fourteen-year period. All right, thank you.
I, I think, Jim, to, excuse me, Mr. Merrifield, to, to piggyback on what Mr. Smith is saying, will there be any construction entrances other than the road itself for any of this construction that you're aware of?
So initially there'll be construction, uh, traffic coming into the site before the road's built. But once the road is built, that's, it, that'll be the only access to Rocky River Road, yes.
I entertain a motion. Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Probably second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next public hearing, solicitation ordinance, thank you.
All right, mayor and council, uh, what we have before you is a consideration of a, uh, new solicitation ordinance that would be added to the town's code of ordinance. Uh, what sparked the conversation related to this ordinance is, uh, this past summer and early in the summer, we received several calls from residents, uh, regarding solicitations, uh, in their neighborhoods. These solicitations that happened were particularly rude. Uh, the salesmen used aggressive sales tactics, uh, and these residents called us and local law enforcement, the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department, to see what could be done to address them. Unfortunately, the town, uh, didn't have any authority to regulate them in any manner because we did not have an ordinance that outlined it. Uh, in fact, Cabarrus County also had no such ordinance. So, uh, we were sort of helpless in addressing the concerns of the citizens. Uh, so we began to look at ways that we could start to initiate the protection, uh, for those individuals. Uh, the town has actually previously considered a solicitation ordinance back in two thousand and ten, but it was never, uh, voted on or adopted. At that time, there was a lot of public concern related to how the ordinance would impact nonprofit organizations. So what we've done is town staff has, uh, moved forward with, uh, reviewing other ordinances in other communities around the area. Um, and we discussed what options are available to us. Uh, we discussed with those community leaders, those town managers, um, you know, what they saw and the need for it in their community. And so what we've done is we've, uh, created or we've drafted a proposed ordinance. Uh, and the intent of the ordinance was centered around creating, uh, an ordinance that gave our law enforcement individuals the tools they needed to protect the citizens and businesses from what we will refer to as nuisance solicitors. So solicitation can happen in a, a lot of different forms and formats and manners and some are common within business industry and some are not. And so the intent of this ordinance is to focus on those nuisance folks, the folks that, uh, just won't leave our unwelcome in a community or for a business owner. So, uh, I'm going to go over some high-level, uh, language. Uh, you guys all have obviously the ordinance in your packet. Uh, but it specifically makes it unlawful for any person to enter upon a privately-owned premise or business without permission or invitation of the owner or occupant for the purposes of soliciting sales, orders, goods, wares, merchandise, or services, both immediate or for future delivery, without first receiving a permit from the town. One of the important factors that we considered here is we recognize charitable organizations, churches, schools, civic organizations, and similar neighborhood associations performing fundraising activities as being exempt. So all of those organizations will not need to abide by the ordinance language that we put forth. It outlines the expectations of the applicant throughout their process, both from the application and the necessary information associated with that, uh, needing IDs, uh, contact locations, contact phone numbers, et cetera, as well as the fee that we will implement associated with the permit. Uh, one unique, uh, aspect that we thought was particularly interesting and, and offered an extra layer of protection for our community is that we require each of the applicants to furnish a, a bond in a penal amount of five thousand dollars to ensure that whatever the solicitor is promising or selling, whether it's orders, goods, wares, merchandise, services, et cetera, those are delivered to that individual without defect in material or workmanship. So, uh, it, it makes the organization or the business, uh, ensure that they deliver or meet the, uh, the expectations of the goods that they are selling to their community. And that five thousand dollar bond will help a particular affected, uh, resident, let's say, from being able to go after that individual and collecting on that bond if they're not delivered the services or wares or merchandise that they were promised. Uh, so this goes an extra step further in, in protecting our residents. The town would issue the permit for a period of twelve months and permits are projected right now to be twenty-five dollars apiece. Violations of the ordinance, uh, can be charged with a class-three misdemeanor from a criminal perspective or fined up to a hundred and fifty dollars from the town's perspective. Uh, we would rely mostly on the fine portion of that, but there may be instances where we would look at a criminal, criminal citation. Of course, we would want to work with our local, local law enforcement and district attorney to make sure that they supported us in any sort of criminal, uh, charge if we were to use that. But it is available to us if we wanted. Additional language will require that the applicant or anyone acting on their behalf to identify if they have been convicted of a criminal offense. So we'll note, be notified of that upfront. The town can choose to deny an applicant or revoke an issued permit under the following conditions. One, if any portion of the ordinance is violated. Two, if it's in the best entrance of the health and safety of the community. And three, if the applicant or its associates have been convicted of criminal offenses. So we do have some ability and some flexibility to deny a permit or revoke it if one has been issued. Some additional language will protect citizens from being accosted by a solicitor. So again, using that aggressive, aggressive, confrontational, even physical approach. It will prohibit solicitation within fifty feet of a financial institution or ATM or teller machine. It will prohibit solicitation within fifty feet of any outdoor dining area or outdoor merchandise area. And it will prohibit solicitation within fifty feet of a public transit stop. It will also assist in helping with individuals standing in line, waiting to be admitted into a commercial establishment. So again, going back to the intent, uh, we're just looking out, uh, for better ways to protect property owners and businesses from the unwanted solicitation and giving that law enforcement the authority to address those when it happens. Uh, one thing I want to drive home is that the ordinance is intended to be driven by complaints. So, you know, we're not going to be out there proactively, uh, enforcing it, making sure every solicitation that happens in a business, uh, has that appropriate permit. Uh, we don't simply have the staff or the resources to do that. But we want to give everyone the ability to make that complaint to the town or to local law enforcement, uh, so that they can go out and address it there. Again, we don't intend to interfere with any current business solicitation practices that are approved or welcomed by a particular business, only those that are not. And, uh, the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department has, uh, gladly agreed to be the enforcement agency for the town on this particular ordinance. So that's a high-level summary of the intent and the background of the, uh, ordinance and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks. So does this leave the U.S. Postal Service as the only option for advertising? I mean, that's kind of the way it sounded to me.
For advertising?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you want to get something to a resident, you're going to have to mail it.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's, that's what I'm seeing in the ordinance.
I would agree with, with, uh, Ms. Conrad, this seems overly strict. Um, I, I was reading a couple of things. One, that also would prohibit because of the, the wording of a performing fundraising activity. So if a church is knocking their doors, inviting people to church, they are, they are soliciting people, but they're not taking place in a fundraising, so their activity would be illegal. You know, so I, I think you're getting, this to me is an overstep.
That wasn't the intent of it, so we can certainly reword that portion of the, uh, the ordinance to make sure it's not just fundraising. I, I think there are other avenues and mechanisms. Uh, you know, most subdivisions in Harrisburg have a no solicitation sign at their entrance.
That's not enforceable.
But it's not enforceable unless there's an HOA member present with a law enforcement officer present who is with the solicitor as they are doing it. So it's basically non-enforceable, uh, really nothing that we can do. The language here gives us the authority to do that.
I like the idea of the ordinance, I just feel like this is too aggressive.
Okay.
For a lot of different purposes. There's a lot of, uh, businesses that rely on some legitimate door-to-door stuff. And the way that we've got that bonding worded, it, it makes it near impossible for some of those smaller businesses to do.
And, you know, my question is, is, you know, we've got some physical therapy places here, you know? If they wanted to go market to, to other doctors or practices within Harrisburg, let them know they opened up. You know, again, that's, that's a violation of the, and I, and I know we under, we're saying this is only complaint-based. But, you know, I expressed some of my concerns in email today that I just, as what you said, Councilman Barfield, I felt it was overreaching in some ways. I think we can do a little bit different wording there. Um, I know you said the, the businesses need some kind of recourse. I, you know, I'd like to reach out to some of the businesses and just see where, what their take is and their interpretation of stuff.
Yeah, so you had, you had brought that concern up about the impact to, uh, local businesses. So I reached out to other, uh, communities that had similar language to what we're considering. Um, and universally, the business community praised the ordinance and they really enjoyed having that intact. And again, I need to, I think I need to emphasize the, um, if it's unwanted. So that's the, at the only point where the town, uh, become involved is if, is if it is unwanted, unwanted solicitation. So businesses that participate in current advertising, flyers in mailboxes, those sorts of things. Uh, you know, again, we're not out there proactively enforcing it. We're only there if it's, uh, if it's been complained about. And we do get complaints. Uh, I feel complaints about the Charlotte Observer throwing their little sales paper out in the driveway. Uh, we feel complaints about people stuffing their, uh, mailboxes, uh, with, uh, with flyers for information. So, you know, certainly it would impact those folks. Um, but I, I would just want to make sure, reemphasize that it's only for complaints that are driven by, uh, solicitors that are not following the rules.
And the last concern that I had was, well, that is the spirit of what we're trying to create here. If none of us in this room are here ten years from now and, and a whole different council, a whole different town manager were in place, this is already on the books, it's something that could be enforceable in that way. And that was the other concern was I didn't want to leave something there that could be used in a way negatively that could impact our business. I mean, I'm not saying anybody here wants to do that. What I'm saying is, we don't know what the future holds, right?
I want to make a comment too, ba, based on, uh, Councilman Barfield, your question. When we were developing the language in this, uh, we found it very problematic to decipher between a legitimate business or a small business that's soliciting versus the, uh, unwanted negative solicitors that we get. We can't, there's no such thing as a sliding scale that will allow us to apply, apply it to them because they're being ugly, but let them go because they're a nice little small business owner, so.
I think there, there could be a difference though. So if a small business has a brick and mortar or they're doing business here in Harrisburg, there could be some different language involved with it. If they're a professional, uh, person that has a license of any sort, you know, a state license. So I, for those in the room don't know, I am a licensed realtor. There are certain things I can and cannot say. But when I have to pay a five thousand dollar bond to the town to make sure I'm providing that service, I'm already paying an insurance bond that covers that. But now I'm also liable if that person complains and says, I didn't get that service and I want to sue them. This is an, an additional insurance bond that would have to go up.
Mr. Barfield. Yeah, so I'm reading here on the exemptions, recognizing charitable organizations, churches, schools, civic organizations. It's to my understanding that there's an exemption there for, for what you had mentioned.
He just talked about small business in general from Harrisburg.
Well, this is, the exemption is fundraising, that the wording is in there for fundraising. What if they're not fundraising? What if it's a vacation Bible school?
I still think we're just taking it a little bit too far. Because this is.
Change the wording, you're not.
Well, this is a complaint-based.
The thing is funny complaints about.
But as soon as one person complains, it's a, it's a violation.
But that's, that's for one person.
But suppose somebody doesn't like that Christopher stuck his real estate flyer in their mailbox. They file a complaint.
Most people just throw that stuff away.
And then he's got a problem.
But if only one person complains, you, we've got eighteen thousand people roughly. If one person complains, you just violated this ordinance.
So what is the recourse if this is a first complaint for a person?
I'm just looking at small businesses, how they evolve over time. And it is word of mouth and they have to get it to one person to get it to another person.
That's what I mentioned.
And we're not allowing signs.
Legally, you're discriminating against.
And now everybody's going to have to use U.S. Postal Service.
And that's the problem with solicitation ordinance is that legally you can't differentiate between a small business and a large business or a, a certified business or not. Vivint Security was a nationally-recognized security company. They would have every check that you could actually put on a box for them to check off and they were the ones in our community harassing our residents. So it, it's that tricky situation of you, you can't break it down to that level that you're requesting. So it's either an all or none.
Hanes, where, where, where did this come up? Where do we start with this ordinance at?
And then, I, I really think that fundraising has to come out.
Fundraising to something else.
Just an activity associated with the nonprofits.
You can eliminate the bond, you can eliminate the bond piece.
Eliminate the bond and then also change the wording so it's not fundraising.
I don't know that you have to eliminate the bond, but I think five thousand is just too.
So reduce it.
Yeah, like a five hundred, a thousand dollars.
Five hundred to a thousand?
Yeah, and then performing activities for their, their organization. And can we limit, if somebody's actually doing business in Harrisburg, they have brick and mortar in Harrisburg, can we make that exemption?
But if five people complain about that one business, how do we handle that?
Rich says that you cannot differentiate between whether they're a Harrisburg business or outside. So again, it's, it's like all or none.
And, you know, so.
But one complaint, you're in violation.
But usually it's more than one that gets the attention. That one person not calling the police, it's the five people that had the harassment going on on the.
I mean, Scott Paget's son, Joel Paget, runs twenty-six acres. Okay. The way he gets his.
It's not Harrisburg.
No, it's in Concord, but I'm using this as an example.
Oh, okay.
The way he gets his business is simply by foot, walking into places like Percent, walking into places like Vortex, walking into Lowe's Foods and talking to these guys and saying, I want to do this, I want to bring this beer. I mean, he goes up and down the, the coast from Wilmington to North Little Beach and then heads north. You know, you're taking that opportunity from these guys to grow their, as Councilman Conrad said, you know, because if there's a complaint, now suddenly Harrisburg is banned for them. And, and then they take their business elsewhere because they don't want to deal with the hospital. And all they were trying to do was just grow their business.
So this was tried, they, they tried to pass this back in two thousand and ten, if I'm correct.
Yes.
And, um, we continued a banter with what's right, wrong, and indifferent. The, uh, the town continues to grow. The amount of population that we had in, in, uh, two thousand and ten was much smaller than we have now. The, the business owners are complaining about the merchant service people that come in, the magazine people that come in. We've got to give them some kind of teeth. Uh, mayor, I, I motion that we approve this and move forward.
Do you want the changes that he had mentioned?
With the, with the one thousand.
We've got a public hearing first, so we've got to open it up to the public.
Okay, we're, 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 hold that thought.
Yeah, just, uh, Mr. Smith, to answer your question about the businesses, again, if, uh, if he's there soliciting, um, to, if he's selling beer, a beer product, and he goes to a bar, that's a business sort of solicitation activity, um, it would be up to that business owner whether or not they wish to issue a complaint. I would think that most business owners would say, thank you, no thank you. And if that person continued to come back and harass them, then they would have this ordinance to rely on. Uh, but, uh, you know, again, complaint-driven only. So we're not going to get involved in normal business practices unless we receive a complaint from a business owner.
And, and, you know, and generally to your point, you would, they would say it to your face, you would think. But occasionally it happens where you get a complaint filed after the fact and you didn't know, you didn't get a chance to defend yourself. And, you know, it is what it is, so.
Heyz, I, I had two instances in the last two weeks. First was Omaha Steaks guy coming into my driveway. And I told him I didn't want nothing to do with it. But the second was Hickory Ridge Middle School selling those cards. And I bought one of those. So, I mean, it's, I don't know.
And that's why we're going to allow that.
If that has any wrong with this.
Yeah, we're going to allow schools and nonprofits and churches and whatever.
I don't live in a subdivision, so there's no, you know, no soliciting sign on, on parallel drive.
It's not enforceable.
Right, so it's not, you know.
You can put one in your yard then.
We definitely don't want to restrict the schools and churches and nonprofits.
That's the only problem I'd have. The Omaha Steaks guy, I don't want nothing to do with it.
And this would be, this would also include campaigning, I'm assuming.
No, political protection is there for, uh, and Rich is back there confirming that.
Protect them and not the small business.
There's political protection on, on campaign signage and advertisement.
Selling stuff while you're campaigning.
Yeah, personally, I just feel like this is, this one's a bit overreaching. I, I've enforced solicitations before. This one I just feel is a bit, bit too much.
All right, let's go to public hearing, then we'll come back and go to council for adjustments or consideration, and then we'll go from there. Are we good with that?
Good with that?
Yep.
All right, I'll open up a public hearing for those speaking for or against this solicitation policy, for or against. I do have Michael Hart on the list.
How you doing? Michael Hart, eight-two-one-nine Kensington Lane. For maybe the one or two people that don't know, and here I am running for town council this year. Um, and actually, a couple of questions I had were answered except for one. Um, what about in public areas like public parks? I mean, I hate to be out in the park with the family or whatever and have somebody come up and solicit me. Um, there didn't seem to be any language, you know, concerning that at all.
We currently have park rules that prohibit solicitation in the parks, so, but those are individual and specific to the park. Uh, from an enforcement standpoint, we just say, get out of here. Um, and they typically abide by that request. In fact, this last July fourth, we had several solicitors, uh, take advantage of that event. And we just went up politely, asked them to leave, and, and there was no issue. So, uh, but that's how those are currently covered. Uh, but this would certainly apply to any public street, any public right-of-way, any publicly-owned space. Uh, it would, it, it's defined in the ordinance that would, it would, uh, completely restrict solicitation in those areas.
Okay, and the other question I think was answered because obviously at this time of year, campaigning is like soliciting. You're going door-to-door, but I guess it's covered by state statutes.
Correct.
So, that's all I had. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for or against? All right, here number close the public hearing, go to council for consideration.
I'd like to motion a thirty-day, um, delay.
We have a motion on the floor for a thirty-day delay.
Let me ask a question. What are we gonna, what, what's the thirty days gonna do?
I, I would like to get us all on the same page, um, with regards to what we feel is a, a, an acceptable amount. What, what is overreaching, what isn't overreaching? I mean, I've heard a lot of things tonight, and I'd like to see us, you know, on something like this, I would certainly like to see us have a unanimous vote, if possible.
So the thirty days that we've had up to this, that nothing has been done?
I'm not following your, your line of question. I mean.
So the, the public hearing was set last meeting, and we've had thirty days to work on this together. And we're just now deciding we're going to work on it.
And we just saw the verbiage on Thursday.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
Our motion on the floor properly seconded. Any more discussion?
I, I agree with Councilman Smith. I've already stated my opinion. I, I think we need one. I'm just not sure this one's it.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did you get that, Jenna? Opposed? Was Troy.
I need a, just a quick clarification. So, uh, because it is a public hearing.
Let's start all over again.
Well, we've had the public hearing and we've closed the public hearing, so we're able to bring it back as an old business item and discuss next month with some changes. And I'll just get some input from you guys between now and then of what those changes are.
Can we also open up the public hearing again just for the sake of doing that?
If you want to do that, then recess this, uh, go back and.
We'll have to reverse this back out.
Reverse back out and just, uh, make a motion to recess the public hearing until next month.
Motion to reverse my motion.
Motion to, to remove the motions on the floor.
Well, actually, so there was a mo, there was a motion and there was a second. And there was, we took a vote. So you've motioned for the reversal, and you've gotten a second, so now I need a vote on that.
All in favor of the reversal, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now let's just motion to recess action on the public hearing until next month.
Motion to recess until next month.
Got a motion on the floor, properly seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thanks. All right, let's roll into lots of new business.
I'd like to, uh, solicit your vote on the next five items we have here on the agenda. We have, uh, six projects here. Um, two of them are combined, A through E. So we'll just start with the very first one on the agenda is the consideration of the bid for, uh, to ramp paving for pavement resurfacing project with Powell Bill funds. So this project is our annual Powell Bill. Uh, it's four hundred thousand dollars was the budget for this resurfacing project. This included the, well, point seven-five miles of road in Abington, um, is including French Field, Vicarie Lane, and Green Park Court. It also includes, uh, most of the roads in Heatherstone, which is, uh, about a mile of roads, um, including the entrance Heatherstone Drive, Pleasant Valley Drive, Woodmere Drive, and Woodstream Drive. And, uh, several roads in Camelot subdivision, which include Bedfordshire, Knights Court, Camelot Court, and Guinevere Court. So we took bids for this project, um, with the budget being four hundred thousand dollars. It, we only did receive one bid on this project, which was surprising, um, and it was for four hundred and forty-four thousand. So we were glad we got our, uh, our budget pretty close to that. But we went ahead and reduced, um, the quantities in that contract to get us right down to the four hundred thousand dollars. Staff recommends.
Roads out, is that what we're saying?
Nah, wha, what we did is just reduce some of the, we didn't move any roads out because it's so small, it was four thousand dollars. We just adjusted the limits, um, of the road. And really, we're still going from point A to point B, um, but we have a contingency built in there of, you know, five percent or so. So reducing that contingency, um, to get down to that four hundred thousand, just assuming that, uh, we won't, uh, have as much funds to work with, uh, for any expansions.
So, quick question for you.
Yes.
Trying to understand the hierarchy on this one.
Yep.
You guys were out, gonna do some paving, gosh, February, March, I think it was, and the machine broke. And.
I think.
Or maybe it was June, I don't know.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think you're thinking of a, a surface treatment product.
Okay.
That, that it was out, so we have a couple of, um, things we do on the road. So our, our resurfacing program is, you know, grinding the road up, putting it back down, um, basically putting a new road on top of a, a decent subbase. What we canceled this year was the Aspen Road Treatment, which is a rejuvenator. It's a, it's basically like the driveway sealer that, uh, is sprayed onto the road. There were two things. One, uh, we, we haven't had great success with that in the past. Um, you see a lot of neighborhoods where you have overspray that's complained about, gets on the curb. Um, the next year you have a lot of tracking and, and, uh, um, so we get a lot of complaints about that product. And it's, it's confused with our liquid road product and, and crack seal. That is the, uh, machine that broke down and it delayed our, um, we basically have a six-week schedule for our guys to get it done. And we ran through all six weeks before getting to that. Um, and, uh, the vendor, um, at that point was using it other places. And to be honest, we didn't, we didn't have another six weeks with our guys to go. So, um, what we did was we took that, um, the dollars associated with, with that sealing, and we've moved it to next spring, um, where we'll use any leftover Powell Bill monies. Um, and, uh, what else did we have that we're, oh.
Street improvement.
Yeah, so our, uh, street maintenance and repair, we're going to take a look at that in the spring. Any monies left over there, anything left over in Powell Bill, plus that Aspen treatment money and, and do another round of resurfacing, which we just think is better bang for your buck at this point.
Thank you.
Yep. So the recommendation on this, uh, item is, uh, approval of the bid proposal to ramp paving, uh, for Powell Bill resurfacing in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars.
Move for approval.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Properly seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next.
All right, so very similar to the first, this is another resurfacing program. It's just a different funding source. So this is the, uh, first round of our, um, bond paving. This is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and this is going to, uh, do about twenty-five thousand square yards of pavement resurfacing, um, including some full-depth repair and incidental patching. This will, this, this project's earmarked for the remainder of Rocky River Crossing, um, whereas we've seen that deteriorate quite a bit from, um, Roberta Road to the west, um, as well as Fenton Dell subdivision, Camelot subdivision. The, uh.
So Rob, that would be all of the roads in those three subdivisions?
So, let me go back to, I did these nice little maps.
Somebody will ask, so I wanted to know.
So let me, let me just list all the roads that we have in the two projects, because I think that'll, that'll just summarize it quite a bit. So we have Rocky River Crossing, um, from Roberta Road out to, um, about Creekview Court. In Abington, we're doing French Fields from Vicarie to about, uh, Thatcher Place. And also, uh, Vicarie from Green Park, uh, to Rocky River, and also, also the remainder of that into French Fields, and then all of Green Park Court. In Heatherstone, we're doing all of Heatherstone Drive, all of Pleasant Valley Drive, all of Woodmere Drive, and all of Woodstream Drive. In the Camelot subdivision, we're doing, uh, a section of Bedfordshire, uh, from where we last stopped, which is near, uh, Galahad Lane and going out to Camelot. And we are also doing, um, three courts, uh, basically long cul-de-sacs on there, which, uh, Knight Court, Camelot Court, and Guinevere Court. And then in Fenton Dell, we're doing, um, all of Tottingham and, uh, Wycombe Court. And that's the entire progress.
And those will all be listed on the website?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, they're all listed under projects under the engineering section of the website. So if anybody asks, just point them there. So the, uh, once again, the second project, which is the first monies we're spending on the transportation bonds, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, once again, that is, uh, ramp paving on that. This time we did get, uh, I think four or five bids, but RAM was the low bid on this. And it, we did adjust the contingency, um, up on this one. It was a little bit short, so it was like three hundred and forty-five thousand. So we increased it, uh, to three hundred and fifty thousand, which is the, um, budget that we have. So we'll ask that, uh, council approve the bid proposal from Ram Paving for the bond project and, uh, the attached declaration of intent to reimburse.
Move for approval there.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Got three seconds. Did you get that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm sure you're going to be hanging out for a while, right?
Yep, yep, got a few more. I'll keep them coming. Okay, we have, uh, the next item on the agenda is the consideration of bid award Carolina Site Works for waterline improvement project. This is for the two thousand and nineteen. Every year we replace, um, aging infrastructure. These are our waterline, um, our worst waterlines. So we have, uh, Carolina Site Work, uh, bid of four hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars, ten cents for the two thousand and nineteen waterline improvement project. Um, this will improve water quality and fire flow to the existing neighborhood. We're going to upsize two and three-inch lines, um, up to six and eight-inch, um, as well as add fire hydrants to several locations. Uh, this will be on Patricia Avenue, Parallel Drive. And, uh, the design was done by W.K. Dixon on this project with the, uh, town pitching in the preliminary design as well as the construction inspection and project management. So we were able to eliminate those costs out of the design end of it. And we've also, um, pushed some of the limits of this project, uh, to next year's project because it's just better aligned, um, with the mobilization of a contractor. So you'll see the, uh, project budget for this was seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. This project's going down to four hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, there's some cost savings there, uh, just by the way we were bidding it. But most of that difference in that cost is due to sections of that being put on next year's, uh, waterline. So we ask that, uh, council approve the attached bid proposal to Carolina Site Works for the two thousand and nineteen waterline improvement project.
Move for approval there.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Properly seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, council. Couple more, bear with me. We have, uh, another contract here. This is a, uh, an engineering contract to decommission two pump stations. This is for, um, Gavlin Dorn Engineering Company. We're doing, on this one, Francis Haven and Farmington Pump Stations. So on, uh, the project that we had just discussed over here, over near the Farmington neighborhood, this will take off two pump stations, uh, from there and running o, run over to about Buckingham where we, um, decommissioned one about a year ago. Uh, so this kind of opens up that whole western side of, of Harrisburg there to gravity-fed sewer.
I entertain a motion.
Move for approval there.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Properly seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, next pump station.
All right, last one. Another pump station. This is with Gavlin Dorn as well. Uh, this contract's the amount of thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. Um, once again, the, uh, town staff has removed quite a bit out of these projects by doing, um, in-house engineering. So you'll see the budget for this was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, most of that we're doing in-house and just hiring out thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars for the detailed design and permitting. Uh, we'll ask that you guys, uh, approve the attached contract for Gavlin Dorn in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you. Next up, application for Parks and Recreation Board consideration.
Mayor, one, uh, thing before we jump into that, um, I want to go back to new business item B. The, uh, consideration of bid award to ram pavement for pavement and resurfacing project under the bond funds. We also need to approve that declaration of intent to reimburse that was submitted there. So I only got a, uh, sorry, I didn't catch that when we were going through, uh, but we only made a motion to approve the, uh, contract, but I need that declaration of intent to reimburse.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the declaration of intent to reimburse on item B.
Motion approved there.
Got a motion on the floor, properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sorry.
Yep. Your turn.
Aye. All right, well, easy stuff this month. So in May, we had an advisory board member leave the advisory board, uh, for purposes of his daughter going to a school in Charleston. So we had a vacancy come up. We advertised that vacancy in June, uh, immediately following his, uh, departure. And so we've advertised for roughly three months. Uh, the last time we had vacancies, we had several applicants. Uh, this time, we've only had one. Uh, we ran through our normal protocols of advertising vacancies through social media, the town's website, word of mouth. Uh, we've actually spoken to several people about potentially being on the board, but we only had one applicant. Uh, that applicant being George Wise, um, he did come to the advisory board meeting last month and speak with them. And they had a few questions for him as well. Uh, they approved his, uh, appointment unanimously or recommended his, uh, app, uh, appointment unanimously, unanimously to the, uh, town council. Uh, his, uh, term would expire in two thousand and twenty-one if appointed. Uh, he's a local member of the community, been here for quite a while. He's a coach, uh, he's, uh, got kids in the, uh, program. Uh, so you're kind of your atypical, so to speak, uh, uh, individual for this appointment on the advisory board. So with that, uh, the advisory board and town staff, uh, recommends, uh, appointment of George Wise to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the vacancies we currently have.
Move for approval there.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, I think you're just hanging around again, aren't you?
Soccer fields. Yes, sir. So Holcomb Woods, just a little bit of backstory, Holcomb Woods was a development approved prior to my time here in 2015 or so, and this was one of our developments that, and actually our first development as part of our new ordinance where either a fee in lieu of or a land dedication for Parks and Recreation would assume. So with this particular development, a land dedication was actually opted to the tune of fourteen acres, and then included on that land was two multipurpose fields, and there's some room for expansion of a little bit of passive recreation, and it would join the neighborhood but yet be separate of Holcomb Development itself. In my time being here, some of the things that I've brought to the developer that's been a concern of mine, and it's not a dig toward the developer, but just in concerns from a park and rec perspective of their ability to properly execute a development of these multipurpose fields to the standards of which we have requested, which is FIFA standards. So during those discussions, I have asked the developer to, instead of doing this themselves in the hopes of getting it right, to propose an MOU or to provide us the fees to construct these with a professional field builder. So with that, I sought out a professional field builder who's done many a fields in this region and all over the state. He came out, looked at the facility, gave us a quote, turned that over to the developer, and then through engineering with Rob and some of the rest of us have had discussions, and we arrived at the MOU of them paying us the fee to construct these fields, which is in your, in your packet. And then what they would do on their side, which we're fully comfortable with them doing, which is part of the things they do with their development, is the asphalt, curb gutter, the entrance road, those types of things, some of your infrastructure items. And then our professional field builder would come in and construct these fields behind that. So with that, we've provided a MOU that would amend the original conditions of this development, which would be condition number ten, and it would allow them to provide us that check and then move forward with the development of this facility as under my management of that project. And then they would be doing the asphalt parking lot under the town standards per engineering approvals. So with that, we recommend, or ask your recommendation to approve the MOU contract for Holcomb Woods and T I, TAC, I think is how they pronounce themselves. And I was gonna look at what the actual... Motion to approve memorandum of ownership stand of TAC Holcomb LLC relating to soccer field facility and related FY 2020 budget amendment as presented would be the recommendation.
Daniel, outline that total amount that would be paid to the town.
How much?
Yes.
Two hundred and something, I'm trying to find that.
Two hundred and forty thousand.
Two forty.
I knew the answer, I was just trying to get the public to have knowledge of the amount being paid.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember, two hundred and forty thousand dollars would be the check paid to the town to construct these fields by a professional builder, that was what we arrived at.
And can a motion?
Oh, there is one other little item. I know there's been some other concerns of the recent changes with Harrisburg Park and those original discussions of cricket fields being there, with the two fields being eliminated that those were originally proposed to be at, which is where the new site of the YMCA would be proposed to be placed. And with the redesign of this Holcomb Woods facility, we did combine those two fields to make one large acreage platform that will enable us to put the cricket facility there. So I just wanted to kinda put that out there, that we haven't forgotten about those members of the community and that need that was requested during the design phase of Harrisburg Park, and that we will be meeting that amenity need through that facility construction.
Got a motion on the floor, probably seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hey, just a quick question, do we know if they met their commitment with the high school and what they promised over there? And I know it's, you probably don't know anything about it, but I'm just curious whether they even, I know it has nothing to do with us, does anybody know if they attempted to meet that commitment?
It was never placed in writing, so that developer's moved on.
Oh, right, it has changed hands since then, so I'd imagine that did go unmet.
The builder is, is sold, so...
Sure.
That builder that promised that, it was never put in writing or made as a condition of approval for the project, so there's nothing that we can do to hold them to implementing that promise.
Got it.
And, and Daniel, on that, excuse me, on that cricket field, there's two sizes, there's a smaller size and full size. Is this, what size is being planned there at this point?
I do not believe we're still gonna be able to get that full, that is an enormous amount of acreage required for a regulation-sized cricket field, which is a hundred and eighty yards radius, which is massive. You, you need roughly a four and a half acre level swath of land to accomplish that, and we are shy of that. And it's gonna be hard to achieve that, so, yeah.
All right, do we have any action items?
I do have one action item.
Changes in the ordinance, the ordinance changes for the...
Yeah, so I'll bring the ordinance back, I'll also bring back the youth council bylaws that'll be on the consent agenda for next month for you guys to approve officially after they have their first meeting. But one item from, from last month, we discussed the knee wall or segmented wall there along Highway 49 at Veterans Plaza. As instructed by council, we decided to move forward with the construction and implementation of that wall, even though we knew that it was gonna go from a standard four-foot segmented wall to a potentially eight or nine-foot wall that would be on the bank there that drops down into the site of the park. So upon getting that instruction from council last month, staff moved forward in meeting with the contractor on site out there, and they began to look at how that wall could be implemented there. And the reality of the situation that we've uncovered is that due to the slope of the wall and the shallow nature of the utilities that run along the side of Highway 49, to be able to move forward with constructing a wall, we can't simply just add height and, you know, increase the, the base of the, the wall and achieve what we had desired, which was the hope. You know, we had brought before you guys, originally the wall was gonna be thirty thousand dollars with five thousand dollars of landscaping. Last month, we asked to move that up to fifty thousand dollars to achieve the additional materials and base associated with the wall. We've now discovered that it's going to have to be a fully engineered wall to construct there on that site. Just again, due to the slope and due to the location of shallow utilities being the, a primary factor, it's not like we can just dig down five, eight feet and establish some nice concrete base. We go three feet down and we're into utilities. So that makes it problematic for us to construct a wall. It's not impossible, we can construct a wall there. But again, we were going to need to engineer that, and we're not looking at a fifty thousand dollar wall, we're probably looking at a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar segmented knee wall. So, before we move forward with that, we want a direction from council on how to proceed.
What's it gonna look like without a wall?
So without a wall, it'll be very similar to what you see now. So you'll have the sidewalk there, parallel to 49, it'll drop down off of the slope, and then you'll begin to see landscaping. So we'll have landscaping on the slope, and then you'll begin to see the landscaping of the actual park itself. So we'll have trees, large shrubs, et cetera, it'll be a sort of a dense line of trees in that area, but you'll see the landscaping portion of it. If we were to move forward and design and actually engineer a wall, we would be looking at, you know, if here's 49 and the slope to the hill is here, we would be constructing the wall here and probably looking to backfill that wall, so that it appears as if it's, as if it's just a normal four-foot wall along that side. But if you're in the park, you're gonna be looking at the backside of about an eight or nine-foot wall. We talked about that last time, and that's not necessarily a bad thing, but the engineering that's gonna have to go into the design of this wall now puts it into a position where it may be cost prohibitive for us to move forward.
Let me ask this question, what is the chance of an accident or something there, cars coming over to the bank?
Yeah.
You know, a wall, at least they're gonna hit a brick wall.
The wall, the wall I wanna emphasize too, would not be designed to be load-rated to accept a car impact, so it's just gonna topple over. You know, we hope that the landscaping, the dense landscaping that we would have, would prevent any car from actually entering into the park area. As with any public space next to a, a, a road, you're gonna have a potential issue there.
Is it possible, at least beside the sidewalk, to put up pillars, let it put up in downtown to keep cars from trying to drive through, sky rides, it's just like, like a stop barrier, but a post? Directive kind of, just to slow down?
We can look at that as an option.
That, and, you know, if, we've already approved the money, increase some of the density or the pillars or... I, I think more so than anything, we're looking at safety, if the car's coming out and the kid's running, so if you could change it, some of those bushes to sticky bushes, as kids run, they're gonna stop. I know that they don't wanna run into a holly bush or something, but that's better than running into 49.
I just wanted to speak to the landscaping plan a little bit. So there are a good dense, there is a twenty-five foot planting strip between where your pedestrian circulation is and where the sidewalk would be, in addition to your ten-foot right-of-way buffer. And then within that planting strip, there's a series of like larger, understory caliber trees of like river birch, ash tree and that kinda stuff. So while immediately they may not, you know, stop vehicles, but if you, you know, have a window of time where those have a chance to mature. The other thing is, is that if we're looking at anything vehicular load-related, we're probably gonna run into a lot of the same issues, and not to backtrack on anything that Haynes has said, we've actually met with the engineers out there as well, and the problem we're running up, running into is the gas utility that runs parallel to exactly where we kinda need to put this, these items. And so if we were gonna do anything vehicular load-rated, whether it be a bollard or a wall, we'd have to have the same depth of footing structure and size to stop a vehicle, thus running into the same utility barriers. I just wanted to note that out there. As far as the funds approved, I mean, not that we wanna be in the business of like getting money, taking money away, I mean, we could, you know, easily stick with the original thirty-four and look at some of the other options that we didn't do as part of the park. You still have the clock tower you could consider, and then there's also such as Commissioner Barfield mentioned, landscape options that we could add or take away to ensure that we get, perhaps we could buy larger caliber trees to start with. So there's, you're buying time essentially, things of that nature.
True, we, we leave the money and let staff kinda come up with best option for landscaping, and then if we have leftover funds...
And let us know what that, what that landscaping is. Like you said, if you have to buy bigger trees or something, that's fine, I guess.
Did we resolve it?
We can look into bollards, maybe not on the hill, but up closer behind the sidewalk as a potential location for some of those to, to address the safety concern. I think let's at least investigate that, we'll investigate the additional landscaping. But I just wanted to kinda get direction, do we move forward with engineering a wall, or do we look at an alternative?
Put honey on top of them?
We're usually a fan of knockout roses and things like that, they're, they're pretty prickly, so...
We had a member, a former member of town council, as well as the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, passed away, Gerald Nichols. He was thirty years on council.
Can we get a proclamation for him, for maybe the next meeting?
I, I do have one question, it was not on the next item, I think, but it was a couple months back, and I think we may have discussed following up with Haynes, and I think maybe there was some confusion on the criteria for the law enforcement study. Do we need to determine that, or would need to make the committee go reach out to us?
Yeah, so we were trying to schedule a special meeting of the council so that we could have a discussion with the contractor that is doing that study. They are working, they're doing, it's not that that project has gone idle. They're collecting their data, they're doing their analysis, et cetera, but they would love to sit down with council, or maybe council would like to designate a small committee of members to sit down and give them insight to the type of law enforcement services are, we expect moving forward, so...
Let's, let's do a smaller group that way, 'cause we try to get everybody in, this will be spending a long time. And at least if the group come back. And this, since Christopher's been behind us, we'll definitely go Christopher on it, who else? You wanna go on it?
Christopher, Benita, and Ron, okay.
Yeah, let's do that.
Another project that we've been working on too is the refresh of the vision statement, and that again is something that we're going to want to meet with you guys to get some direction on. So would you want to meet as a whole council for that one?
I think we do a whole council on that one, it's controversial, it's not spent over time.
Okay, well, everyone just look out for meeting invitations from myself, for, for the three members that are on the law enforcement committee, and then as well getting the vision statement.
I believe in tonight, we'll be back to Virginia.
We'll get it scheduled sometime next week.
All right.
And when you, I want you to have some pre-climinary verbiage on the solicitation, the sooner the better.
Okay.
So we can have any kind of dialogue.
Sure.
And we do have a closed session tonight, a small one for, for some HR-related issues, so you don't have to stack. So I entertain a motion to go into closed session. Got a motion on the floor, properly seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.